Call this meeting to order. Ms. Sanders, would you call the rule, please?
Mrs. Cottkill is not here. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson is out this evening. Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mrs. Intihar is not here this evening. Mr. Roman?
Here.
Let's see. Faith, would you lead us in the process?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is by a little call, please.
No, you can do on paper.
But all those in favor, please, so state that saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passing the vote. We have now suspended the rules and we are adjourned to a workshop setting. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Schuler. Your report on instruction?
Yeah, I'm going to introduce first, Stalkwest, who's going to start with two topics on for tonight, a report on instruction or student achievement, and then we've got just a brief report on technology, so.
Wanted to remind everyone why we talk about the student achievement data right at the start of the school year, it seems kind of an odd time to do that, but we get a lot of the state testing data back over the summer. And in fact, this data hasn't yet been released to the public. Our parents will get the how their individual students did on Friday, and then later on, this will be released to the press. So right now, we don't have benchmark data of how other districts have done. We get that information after their parents have had an opportunity and their boards have had an opportunity to look at this. So what I'm going to do is walk through just these topics. Where are we now? Where are we headed? How will we measure and share our progress? Because as you know, this is the last year for ISAT, and we'll be going through new type of testing. So we're going to spend a little bit of time talking tonight about what next year's presentation might look like, because we're going to have some dramatic changes. We're also going to talk about what plans we're taking to get there. So where are we now? As usual, we exceed state averages. We continue to have a high number of students, and we continue to be strong and show improvement. Going to start out with reading. This is the 2014 data, so this is the test that our students took way back in March. And this is the comparison, the blue columns are the district and the red is the state. And you can see that District 200 continues to do well above what the state does. The next slide is just for reading, grades three through eight, and that begins to be trend data. And just to remind you from last year, that little dotted line in between 2012 and 2013 is when we had the change in the cut scores, and what was proficient became a little bit harder to achieve. So that's why there is that drop. Again, the exceeds category is the red. In the blue, what gets reported to parents for the most part is the meets and exceeds combined. But we like to keep track of the exceeds as well to make sure that we're continuing for that role. This is high school reading with trend data. And I know I'm going kind of quickly, especially for those people who are nodding, so haven't seen this, but the board has had this before and has had some time to look at this. Now let's switch over and talk about math. Same thing, district comparison to state. Grades three all the way through 11. This is math grades three through eight with our trend data. Again, the same change in the cut scores there. Little tiny 1 percent gain, can't really celebrate over that, but you do need to know that between 2013 and 2014, they did change the test again a little bit, and you include only questions that were geared toward more rigorous Common Core. So while it's only a 1 percentage gain, we feel pretty good that we kept that there with the change in questions. High school math. Then we start talking about college and career readiness. And you might think, well, Faith, why do you have old stuff on here, fall 2013 when we're looking at the trend data? Our students are just taking that for fall 2014, so we don't have that back. So this is a new column of data that wasn't here last year, even though it says fall 2013. You have the English, the math, the reading. You can continue to see some of our nice gains with science. Then this switches to high school, and where are we at with how they were doing in comparison to the state? Again, district being blue, state being red, and the English, math, reading, and science for college and career readiness. ACT, something we always keep really close tabs on. This is the college and career readiness portion of it from class of 2013 to 2014. Little bit of dips, but when you look at the average ACT composite score, this is district to state, you see we ticked up just slightly by 2 tenths of a percentage point. This is a slide I'm always really excited about. This is advanced placement, and this is a huge deal in District 200 to celebrate. This is the percentage of our graduating seniors that got at least a three on one AP exam or higher. And if you look at that nice trajectory, that's something to celebrate. Even some really, really highly accomplished high schools do not have this high percentage on the AP exams. We're not only having more students take and sit for these exams than a lot of high schools were having success at, too. That was like data in two minutes. So really, what I wanted to get on to is what are we going to do with what we need to do with making improvements? Because if you just look at District 200 on how we compare with the state, we always do better than that. Our trend data is looking solid, but things are changing. So this is where we're always headed. We want more students reading college and career readiness, and we want more students with 21st century learning skills. But how we're going to measure this is going to change. ISAT, we're not doing that anymore. We have PARC. And for those people who really hate educational acronyms, that's the Partnership for Assessment and Readiness of College and Careers. And PARC is going to be online testing. We're going to have the option at high school whether we can do paper, and I think we'll probably do that. It's also administered not only in March, but again, with portions of it in May. There are extended response where students have to type in responses, which is different than what we've had before. There are questions with four correct answers from a multiple choice selection. There's dropdown menus and drop and drag. It's a very different type of test than what ISAT has had. And I'm going to be asking you later on in the presentation what kind of data and things you might like for next year. So be thinking about your homework assignment, because that's coming a little bit later.
Faith, can I use the acronym again? I'm sorry.
Sure. It's the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers.
Thank you.
Sure. So district assessments, what I'm really excited, and if Julie was here, I'd give a shout out to her personally. But Julie and a few staff members have really worked to get us ready for PARC. We have a distinct advantage that we have been doing online testing with our math standards starting last year and then this year with our K-8 students, even our kindergartners are on there and doing some of our things online, which not only gives the students the experience that, but we're experimenting and making sure a lot of that technology is ready and in place to be able to do this much online testing with PARC. We have already pre-assessments that we give all of our students in math, and then in the mid-year, we're able to see where they're at with that. We follow up with end of year. We did this assessment last year with math, and then we revised and tweaked it a little bit, so now we can start to have trend data. It's also great that we can go through and look at students individually for growth data. And then what we will do is after PARC is in place, we will go back and look at our own assessment and make sure that they are aligned with where our students need to be using PARC to go back and predict college and career readiness. So while the tests are changing, I feel really confident that we have a baseline here at District 200 and have our own assessments to be able to measure all the new standards that we put in place. All right, so next year, ACT, that's not going away, we'll still have that. Advanced placement data, not going away, we can still do that. I anticipate that we're going to have PARC state to district comparison. We'll still have the district, you know, percent of students mean district proficiency, but this time off of district assessments, and I'm suggesting that we report and look at that. And we'll start to have district trend data on math as well. So that's a few of my suggestions and recommendations that I think that the public would be interested in and the board would be interested in. Later on in the presentation, I'm going to ask if those are the things that you continue to think would be of interest and what we should be reporting out to the public. More importantly, let's talk about how we're going to get there. We've got to have quality curriculum, and that is not only the materials and the standards, it's also the assessments that go along with this, and that's academic and social emotional. All of that learning needs to happen. You've got to have quality instruction. If you have really great standards and really great assessments, but you're not talking about best practices and brain research and how to deliver instruction, we're not going to get there. We have to have quality staff. That not only means hiring them, but developing them. We've got to have quality relationships, because if you don't prove to people that you care about them, we're not going to be able to instruct them. And we've got to have quality programs that all support that and quality facilities for all this to happen. So I'm not going to read this slide, because every slide after this is more detailed with this. So in the new language arts standards, they've been implemented at the high school, we've been working through that. Really excited about our writing continuum. District 200 really had a lot of work to do with writing, and we now have the same language from kindergarten, first, second, all the way through eighth grade, where we're talking first just about focus, and we're getting into talking about organization and support and style, and having all of those teachers use the same type of language to teach writing. First time ever, we know each child's reading level, and we're using Fana Suppanel. We started that last January. All the elementary schools are using that to really tailor instruction, not only for the students that are below, or on, or above, but everybody in between, so that a part of the reading instruction is geared just to that student's reading level. We continue our work with the reading frameworks. We have a brand new elementary report card. Last year, as you recall, we went standard based in math. This year, it's standard based in everything. Writing, reading, PD, science, social studies, at every grade level. We also are talking about how to get reading, writing, speaking, and listening into science and social studies, because we do a lot of that in other content areas. It is not just the English Language Arts teachers that need to deliver that instruction. And then we came up with a one-page reflection guide that principals and people from my department are using to look in to see our best practices happening in our language arts and our English classrooms during walk-throughs. Big emphasis on writing. We now have grade level rubrics for every student to be able to use and reflect on their own writing about did they meet their. Because as you know, it's not enough to the teachers understand, when the students write and they go off to college without us, they have to have something in their head that they need to reflect on. Did I have organization? Did I have enough support? And we're really teaching autonomy through the writing process. Got to break just a little bit for Friday. We have a writing training going on. It's going to be 450 staff, and it's all online, all differentiated. We've created activities and videos. We have a hotline that they're going to be able to call if they have issues, and it's going to be tailored, and we usually use what we believe is the best instruction out there and modeled it. So every PLC is going to be doing different things as they go through this whole process. We're going to continue focusing on math. I know last year you listened and listened and listened to me talk about math, but this year, we're continuing those walkthroughs. I just got done doing all of the middle school math classrooms to schools last week, and I do two more tomorrow. And then we sit down with the principals and we talk about what was best instruction, and then the principals are going through and using that same checklist to make sure all the things that we said we were doing in math are happening. Already talked about district assessments, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of an idea about the work process that goes into creating those assessments. We purchased a word question bank, so it's already been tested with thousands of students to make sure that the question is actually assessing the standard that we wanted to, that there isn't a hiccup in the vocabulary or the graphic that would be taken, which is a much more improved process than having teachers create that. And so they've gone through and created this bank, and we had teachers do that, then we've gone through, used the assessment. Julie is tremendous at being able to go through and see which questions were the most valid and reliable indicators of whether they're going to be where they need to be at for college and career readiness, and we tweaked some of that after we got input from every single PLC in the district on that process. The great thing about having all these tests online, literally, as Whittier finishes, I press a button on my computer, and I know which first graders know which standards in math at Whittier, by which teacher. Lot more turnaround, a lot more use by teachers and principals because of the immediacy of the data. Didn't want you to think that PLCs are gone by the wayside at all. We continue to work on the PLCs. In fact, each year, we set up what is kind of a tight loose, like how are we going to take the next steps? And high schools are all working on having at least four common formative assessments that they're sharing within their PLCs to then go back. And we teach to those students who didn't master a particular standard and to enrich those. Middle schools are working on eight, and elementary are doing 12, a minimum of those for this school year. Also, as I go around and talk to principals, excuse me, I'm talking with them about how is it going? Show me some of the minutes. Show me some of that. I go through and I visit teams and go to their PLC meetings. Thanks. So it's very much alive and well. Some of our PLCs are much further down the continuum than others, but we're all making progress, because this is how we're going to conquer all that differentiated instruction. It's too daunting of a task for teachers to do that by themselves. Also, my department is kind of switching its focus a little bit this year. My first few years here at District 200 have been create the Common Core stuff, get out there, create it, get the pacing guides, get the assessment stuff, get all of that stuff ready to go. Go train, go train, go train, go train. Now it's really, we have some of those processes in place. It's making sure that it's getting done, making sure that our staff have the things that they need and that our principals are ready to be instructional readers with all of this in place. So we do have a director of instruction who's spending a full day a week at the middle school level to help support the principals and also to go in and model instructional practices and walk through classrooms to make sure that that's happening. We use a grant to hire an English learner coach two days a week. She's going out and helping staff that are struggling with some of our English learners. And then we divvied up all of the schools, and someone from my staff, we call them caffeine and break down people, because the names usually happen early in the morning over coffee, they go out and meet with staff that are struggling with things and also go through and walk classrooms and are a resource to the principals as we implement all of this. We continue to use a small group of reading teachers. They come and meet in my office and talk to me about how it's going with the reading framework, and then they go back and visit classrooms as well. So a little bit of a switch from creating all of the stuff to implementing and coaching and spending more time on that. Also, Rod and I are working hard on the integration of technology. Remember at Engage 200 where we talked about the future of the learning environment, the fit, and really getting a strong vision for what learning environment should look like in the future with and without technology? And we've got a whole committee that has been working on that. We work with the principals. Each principal is sharing that information with the staff, and then we're creating how that training is going to roll out to the rest of the staff, so we have a common, not just in language arts and math, because you've heard me talk about that with the reflection guides, but with all classrooms, where are we going? We're doing a lot of work with Google. We have a new Google admin site. Rod, he would testify to the demand for Google training and Google devices and all things Google. I have like hundreds of emails a week on how are we going to do that? So we're building some online training that we're going to be able to give to staff so that they're ready to do that. We're training with principals, just a lot of things going on, and Google keeps updating things every couple of weeks, so it's hard. You've got another one today?
For the meeting.
So we're trying to keep up with all of that and then do just-in-time training now to the staff. All right. You said keep it short. I'm working on it. Right.
We're supposed to tell people, isn't it?
But the point of that is, is not really to keep it short, but to have time for the boards to look at this and say, all right, project a year from now and think about which sets of data. Because just so you know, I get data by subgroups. I can tell you, between the four elementary schools, the girls that learn the most about sight words are at such-and-such teacher. I mean, we can drill down and get specific about school by school, standard by standard, but none of that is really board-level stuff. So what are you interested in with which sets of data? And then what's the forum for some of these plans for improvement that we talked about?
Jim, you want to start up?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Just looking at some of this data, I am going to go back, I don't remember the page numbers, but you know, the first point is the reading percentage of students meeting or exceeding. It shows that we're about 75. There you go. And that one's math.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any generalization that could be made or identification of a group that's in the 25, or the 25, 27 percent that's not meeting or achieving this, you know, that's the other side of the graph, if you want to call it. You know, the percentage of students not meeting or exceeding. Is there any, you know, can we develop any kind of consensus of, you know, who are those students or, you know, whatever?
Especially in the reading area, a lot of our English learner students fall into that category. Those students that are not yet proficient in speaking English or listening and comprehending English to sit at a seventh grade level and take that test on a seventh grade English level is not going to happen. Now, we don't have 25 percent. That doesn't make up all of that. District 200, we also, like many other districts, are low-income students. And there are low-income students that are at exceeds level, that are at meets, but we do have a higher percentage of our low-income students in the category of does not meet. The good news is, is what is good instruction helps the English learner student, it helps the low-income student, and it helps the students that are already in the blue get to the exceeds level. So it's not about finding out what do we do for that group of students or that type of students, it's what do we do for best practices and instruction? And we already know what is that we need to do. It's a daunting task, but it's not like we don't know what to do. It's finding the resources and the PD and the training to get all of that accomplished. I'm not saying that if you've just moved in and you don't have English, that I'm going to be able to get you at the seventh grade level, but within four years after you've been in our schools for some while, we should be able to get them to meets.
And drilling down that data, then, I'd be curious, looking in the future, if we can identify the group of what I'll call not meeting or exceeding, whether their progress is any better?
Sure. And with the Fana Suppanel that I talked about, especially at the younger grades, we keep track of those students, even if you have a fifth grader that's reading at first grade reading level, and we have some of that. I'm able to sit with the principals and the principals sit with the teachers, and we use the Fana Suppanel data to make sure that they are making more gains than even what a fifth grader would make, so that we can chart their progress to know that they're making gains. Little bit more difficult by the time they get to middle school to keep that definitive, but we have met with the reading teachers at the middle school level, and they're also using Fana Suppanel for those students that are that far behind in grade level to make sure that they're on the trajectory to catch up.
And then corresponding, okay, then I look at the S schedule, and I look at the next one that's about math, and it's, you know, similar percentages, I'll call it, you know, it's in the high, you know, mid to low 70s. But then I go to the next one, which is the college and career readiness, and I get, I understand that's eighth grade, and the other was all students, but what is, it seems to be there's an inconsistency in reading or English where 80% readiness, and in math, when we're, you know, still equally, you know, exceeding the expectations, I guess, you know, at the same percentage overall, we're at a 50%. Those seem to be inconsistent to me. Can you explain what that 80 versus 55 is, for instance, in the math and the English?
Right, so you're asking two questions. One is kind of why are we at 55 for math here and higher on the ISAT? That's one of your questions, right?
Well, yeah.
And the ISAT is, and that's one of the reasons that it's good that it's going away, is not aligned with ACT and college and career readiness. Usually, I'm standing here and talking about, before we had the cut score change, we had 90% of our students making it in math all the way through elementary and then through middle school, and then they'd be down at 65 or 70% for the high school. It wasn't that from ninth grade to 11th grade, our students became that less proficient in math. The change in the test happened, and what they were scoring and looking at was different, and the amount of rigor was different. So here, when you have the math at 55%, and we were up at 70 on ISAT, they're testing different things. And the state test, just so you know, in Illinois, is a very easy math test, especially prior to two years ago. This is more indicative, when you get to the ACT level, of what really needs to be at college. But that's changing. Now, you want to know the difference of why we're so high in English, but not as high in math. The English portions of that, some of this is grammar and that kind of thing, which is not tested as part of the ISAT reading piece. So again, testing very different types of things, and there is, as you can tell on the graph, a very different level of competency, but if you look forward to the, and this is where it is by the time we get to the high school piece, not as much of a discrepancy there. So we are looking a little bit at that eighth grade explore test, but that that you saw happens at many other middle schools. If you look at Naperville 203's data and that kind of thing, there is a big drop-off between English and the rest of the subjects on the eighth grade test. So I think it's more of the test than it is of what our curriculum or our standards are.
Faith, can you go back to the first slide that Jim was addressing, please?
Reading?
Yes, please.
That one.
Yeah, I don't want to get too granular, but the five percentage point drop from eighth grade to junior year in our district, and then you look at the state, and it's a push, you know, it didn't improve or get worse. Can you explain that five percentage point difference between an eighth grader and a junior? If I'm reading it correctly?
Right, and you are. We, the drop between the state differences, like we have much more of a change between eighth grade than we do 11th grade. And while the state stayed constant for this particular, and you'd want to go back and look at some of the trend data and make sure that, as a different grade level goes through, sometimes you have a much higher grade of functioning of students, and then the next grade isn't as high. So I would want to go back and also look at the 213 and 212 data to, before I said, well, eighth grade to 11th grade is that much of a difference. We did, with our eighth graders and along with seventh grade, we've been implementing the reading framework for about a year at some of our classes, and we did have one particular middle school that worked really, really hard on that and had eighth grade, especially in the areas of the reading, really did a great job. So I think they are capable of causing that little bit of a spike where we used to have more of a downhill. I don't think 11th grade has gone down, but I think our eighth grade, especially because of one school's efforts, went up.
What, that one, I mean, Spock, Markman, what's your?
George.
And that one school that went up, I mean, that sounds like something we ought to be making sure it's happening in the other schools, right?
Yes, and that's happening. Just even at the elementary, so if you have one school that really did a great job on fractions, and then I make sure that everybody finds out what they did. We had a particular elementary school that just hit it out of the park on math vocabulary, and now I'm telling everybody, you know, what they're doing on the math vocabulary piece. The good thing about the middle school, they were kind of further along in doing what we already said we were going to do. So it just validated that we're on the right track. So, it just validated that we're on the right track.
Yeah. I have a few comments and questions. First of all, I am with you on the AP exam data. That is just always wonderful news. It's one of the few things that we actually have trends for.
Right.
And that are, is very meaningful in terms of what it means to our kids and our families. Not that the other test data isn't, you know, helpful to us, but that actually affects their lives. And so, that is a great thing to see, and it's a big accomplishment. So, thank you for, you know, keeping with that initiative and not just letting it, you know, go. Couple of questions. ACT. So, we're doing ACT this year, as I understand it?
Yes, it was up in the air for a little bit about whether the state was going to continue funding that. And as long as we take it within a certain window, the state is continuing to fund the ACT this year. We're going to still follow that guideline of taking it in March in that window. So, we will continue to have ACT trend data as it's been discussed before.
So, and all of our students will take it who are considered-
Correct.
-eleventh grade, I guess it is, right? And is that both portions, the work key and the ACT plus reading? Because they're paying for both of those, right? But not the explore, the plan?
Right, right. So, the pre that was going on with that, but the ACT data as we've had it will continue to be the same.
Okay. So, I'm just, and that is great, because I think that's very important, that all of our students have access to that. I'm just thinking had a little bit, do you happen to know whether our neighboring districts or benchmark districts are choosing to take that? Because if they aren't, then we will be comparing ACT scores among all our students with perhaps ACT scores of more college-bound students in other districts. Am I correct about that?
The, you know, I talk with the Napervilles quite a bit, and they, you know, are of our mindset that everybody should be taking that test. It does go through, we have a curriculum like listserv, and we're very busy with emails and questions about not only PARC and ACT, but about which were the window? Are we going to go paper? Are we going to go pencil? And a lot of that is still up in the air. We were just sitting with our own high school administration at last night, you know, making some of these decisions and final things. So, I do believe that most districts will continue to travel, but everybody's going to take it, especially since the state is continuing to pay for it. After next year, I'm not sure.
So, it might be, it might be something that we'll have to be aware of when we're making a budget, if it were something we would have to pick up on our own, if we were feeling strong about all of our students having it.
Correct.
And then, as we're on the subject of testing, I mean, you mentioned district assessments. Well, let me say this. I remember IGAP, somebody this morning said, "Oh, I'm pre IGAP." But we had a breakfast bureau at this morning with our legislators, but I remember IGAP, I remember, obviously, ISAT. I think there were a couple of changes. It seemed to me when Dr. Sorik was here, there was at least one change in either the ISAT or the IGAP. My point is, it feels to me like we've never been able to have more than three years of trend data. I, you know, in all honesty, we never have. And so, I'm encouraged that you're thinking the district assessments will become our very own trend data, that we're responsible for keeping and making reliable and valid so that as the state or whoever it is does their thing, we still know what we're doing.
Right. There's a lot of angst out there about some of the unanswered questions regarding some of the assessments that are coming up, and how soon we're going to get the data back, and how all of that's going to work. And by having our own district assessments, and they're all based off of, they're aligned to Common Core, because we've owned Common Core and even tweaked parts of it, it's really geared toward our standards. And the benefit, not only of having our students experience that and have it be online, since we're giving a pre, and the pre covers everything for the first half of the year, and then the mid covers that again, we'll be able to have growth and catch students way ahead of time of who needs more enrichment or who needs interventions. Then, after we get the data back from PARC in June, when, I mean, I probably shouldn't use this term with the board, but I use it with the school, then it's kind of the autopsy of how the school year went. Like, there's nothing left that you could do for that group of students with those teachers that year. By getting data in the middle of the year, kind of do a checkup and say, "Hey, we've got to work on this. We've still got that to do. We've got a half a year still to make sure that students are ready before they go on to the next course or the next grade."
And so, we've got the district assessments, we've got the AP at high school, we've got ACT, we've got PARC, we have the Fountain Canal, we've got formative assessments, maybe teachers actually even make their own tests from time to time. I guess my question is, how is all of this playing out in the classroom? Are we able to replace, let's say, some teacher test? My understanding was that eventually in high school, some of these, either district assessments or formative assessments would replace finals. Are we actually able, at this point, to start replacing some? And how is this really playing out in the classroom in terms of test time versus classroom time? Are we hurting on that, or?
Excellent, excellent question, because you do not want to have spending so much time accumulating data that you don't have time to teach it. And when I use those words, formative assessment, those are all teacher-created tests, and formative assessments can be as simple as, "As you're leaving today, I have three questions for you about fractions, okay? I want you to take the first two fractions and do this. I want to take a second question where you can create a word problem for me that requires you to add fractions, then turn them into me." And the teacher sorts them into, "All right, because people, these group of students have it, these groups are, I really want to work with this group." So, it's not, when I talk about formative assessments that go along with PLCs, it's not sit for exam, take an entire period to test. It's quick checkups that are common across that course or that grade level to kind of progress monitor where we're at. Teachers have been doing formative assessments for a long time. What's different with the PLCs is having a common one that all seventh-grade math teachers at a building were using, so that they can say, "What'd you do? You got your kids to really understand exponents, and I did work for them." So, you can have those quick, kind of, health checks, if you will, on how that's going. So, on the PLCs, when we're talking about all those formative assessments, they can be quizzes, exit slips, they're not a whole nother layer. With our district assessments, one of the things that we worked really hard to do, because I do worry, if you have PARC assessment in March, and you have PARC assessment in May, and you have, you know, all of that, what are we going to do? The pre-assessment, the mid, and the end for the elementary and the middle school classes are all to be given within a half an hour or forty minutes. This is not like an ISAT test where it's fifteen hours of testing, because we want to minimize that. The high school level, though, to be really honest, it gets very daunting, especially for second semester. If you are a student that is in those percentage of students that are taking the AP classes, you're doing that, you have PARC, you have high school finals, you have PSAE. If you look at what standards we can cover first semester, it's a lot more time than what we have second semester to do that. And as you know, we were pretty vocal with the state about how often and how many grades at the high school level would be tested through all of this, because it's a real danger to continue to test for hours and hours and hours and have no time left for instruction. So, I think that while we're balancing that, the undergrades, and we won some of that battle with the state at the high school level, it's still a concern, because it's all compacted into a couple of months' time.
Faith, I have a number of questions.
Okay.
Some of the page numbers here. If you can go to the ISAT and PSAE reading results. I noticed there seems to be a dip in sixth, seventh grade here, where the state average stays about the same from fifty-eight point two percent in fifth grade to fifty-seven point three, fifty-nine point four, but we show a drop to seventy-four point seven and seventy-three point four in reading. And then I go to math, and I kind of see the same drop, although there's a drop in the state average there as well. And then I notice that we are having a, you mentioned that we're having instructional-
Instructional coach.
At the middle school level. Is this reflective of a challenge at the middle school level?
As you know, I believe that my department, it isn't just about pre curriculum understanding, so we have to go out and actually see if it's happening. And as we walked through middle school classes last year and doing that again, we realized that we have a need for some professional development, especially with differentiating instruction, and really knowing how to raise that rigor. At text level here on reading, and in the math, really raising that rigor. Now, it's more complicated, as you can understand, to switch to Common Core, the higher the grade level that you go, because we haven't had the stepping stones. You know, the fraction piece of Common Core is huge, and for our seventh graders that didn't have the raise bar in fractions for sixth or fifth or fourth, that's a bigger gain. And I think that some of our staff needs additional support and training on how to differentiate and really what that rigor is. So, we identified last year that we really needed to give some more support to middle school, and that is why I didn't have the data back yet, but as we went through the classrooms, I said, "Look, you know, we've got to give that time." So, that is one of the reasons that I have a full day from my Director of Instruction to do that. And that's also why I'm visiting the principals and going through about how to do the walk-through guides with math and with line charts, to make sure that we implement what we said we were going to do.
And will the, in district assessments that you've created and are created, will they help you identify issues like this promptly, quickly, so that we don't have to wait for a year to get back the data from the state or something?
Yes. And as we did math, part of my classroom walkthroughs, I get to say, "Oh, we've got a great teacher at Second Central School who's doing great on vocabulary." And we had people go visit that class, and we videotaped that. But yes, as you get the actual student achievement back that we've just done with our pre-assessment, you can already see, oh, you know, this group of seventh graders doesn't have what they, you know, needed from sixth grade, we've got this to do. So, you're exactly right, that what that district assessment data allows us to do is do that doctor visit and put in interventions and things in place, and not wait until after the school year is over.
Excellent. Okay. If you could, just go to the ACT results. I had mentioned to you this morning, before the legislative breakfast, that I had seen this, I knew this chart, and I seen how that you explained it. One of my anticipated questions is that we were averaging from 2009 to 2012 on ACT, twenty-four to twenty-four point four during that range, and a drop in 2013. That's because the range of students that were required to take the test in 2013 changed and expanded to include all of our students.
Right. Where we had, and as did across the state, for the students that needed extended time, and some of those students were in special education, some of the students had five or four points, the students that had a longer time to take the test weren't usually, weren't included in those composite scores. And where the dotted line is there, that's when that changed. And for the most part, the students that had that extra accommodation were not the high-level students. They were getting accommodations for a reason. Not always, there are some students with accommodations that, you know, have excellent, off-the-chart ACT scores, but that did play into some of that drop.
Just for clarification on that, that if what, that those students were always taking the test?
The schools weren't.
Their scores weren't included in a report that came from ACT called the Graduated Class Report. So, we got them on the state data, we didn't get them on that report that I think is charted.
Switching to the PARC assessment that's coming up. I've heard some concerns expressed by some of the principals of my, for my doctor schools that there's some concern that there'll be millions of students going online this spring, and they're not confident that the administrators of this test will have the necessary technology and infrastructure to handle it. Do you know where that stands? Is that a concern you share as we're up there, or?
Well, it's certainly something that hasn't been done before. We've seen where healthcare systems or other things, there's more and more people, and I'm not privy to how PARC is assessing how well that's going to go. It's just whether, if you can imagine every third grader in the city and other states sitting down to do that at a similar time, there's not been a whole lot of tests on that. So, I don't think there's reason to worry, but we've seen, work is not proven with the information, but they've done the test to make sure that all that works.
And we learned that, I learned at the legislative breakfast this morning, that was District 204, I think, was a pilot, had a pilot program for the PARC test, so they have some familiarity with the type of questions. Has that been published to all of us, so that we have an idea of what those questions look like?
Sure. There's actually a website from PARC that gives sample questions, and when I went through and did my half-day training with all the staff, we went through and did practice questions. I showed them what the dropdown menus look like, what the multiple choice, what the extended response would look like. So, we had the benefit of that. I also had Julie go to 203 and 204 as they went through and tested and saw, you know, what all this would look like. She's been part of those conversations and helped administer some of that test. So, as far as what the questions look like, everybody's had access to that, but what the field testers, if you will, learned of, like, what does it mean to batch the Tesco's? What does it mean to have to have a proctor? What happens if the screen freezes? And what we learned from that is that PARC learned a lot from that and is making changes so that it isn't that those districts have now had the experience of exactly what PARC is going to look like for the spring. There were changes and things that are still being changed from that field test that will look different for our students when we take it in March and in May.
This question may be for the praise, but generally, are educators comfortable with the sorts of questions that are on the PARC test? And I asked that, and then people saw the sixty-minute episodes pass Sunday on Common Core, and the principal at this Long Island school was criticizing some of the assessment questions, and read one of them, and I have to admit, I didn't understand the question myself. So, that's the basis for my question.
I think that anytime you change the rigor dramatically, especially in some of the upper grades in math, there's going to be a, how are we, you know, how are we going to-
It was a math question.
-get to that next level? And certainly, the amount of critical thinking that is used, like, there'll be a lot of extraneous information in a math problem that you have to filter out and say, "Well, I don't even need to know this particular computation or know this." And they put some misleading language in some of the math questions so that you really have to think about it and be able to apply it, not just capture the numbers and, "Oh, yeah, it says altogether, so I'm going to add." And that's trickier. So, I think there, when I presented this to our staff, there was some, "This is going to be a lot harder." Not that the questions were unfair or the questions weren't legitimate, just that this is going to be a much harder test than what we've done before.
My final question relates to the PLCs. I had my teacher dinner tonight, and one of the observations I heard was that some of the, some of the PLCs are still wrestling with the standards, and what was the unwrapping-
Unpacking.
Unpacking standards? And they were being urged by their principal or their department heads to get beyond that and start assessing the data so they can implement differentiation in their teaching. I'm assuming that this is the message that's going out, District Y.
Right. And at the high school level, that's been more of a struggle than at elementary and middle school. The high schools, we've kind of had a double duty to do, to be able to do PLCs. You first have to have agree upon standards of, and that goes that, like, North and South have to agree that these are the things in geometry that everybody's going to need to know. And before you can move on to creating formative assessments and getting together to talk about that, you first have to agree, these are the things you've got to know in geometry. That really hadn't been done between both high schools and having an agreement on that. So, we had to start with that first. So, you're right, that there's some frustration with some of the PLCs, that we're still working on what all that would look like, so we can have a common summative assessment. And when I sat down with the principals this summer, I said, "We've got to be moving on to doing that and still posting learning targets, still making those assessments, because they're teaching still. Let's do both of those things." And I know that that message has gone out to department chairs, but is really going to come across loud and clear on Friday at the Institute Day. to come across loud and clear on Friday at the Institute Day.
And with respect to the homework assignment you gave us, I think, as we learn from the Engage 200 process, I think our residents, our communities, we love to see comparison data between our benchmark districts. But from what I gathered from your explanation of the assessment we're doing here in-house in the district, we can compare our schools' performances against each other. I frankly have kind of, have angst about that. I can see some benefits. I can see a lot of detriments to that. So I don't know if I can answer that personally, that question, that, that sort of data.
Do you want mine to stand?
Yes.
I think it's really important that in-house, we're looking at school-to-school, and we do that all the time. That's how I find out about great things that are happening at eighth grade or great things that are happening at one elementary school, plus my classroom walkthroughs. But to, and when you go to the Illinois Interactive Report Card, you can compare school by school by state testing and all of that thing already. If we include it here and you just put up, like, I used to do the AYP reports, remember all the acronyms of all that stuff, and you had, remember how complicated that got to explain to people about why some school made it and some school didn't, and because they had two more students that were English learners than it? So you want to be really careful of just using, here's our blank percentage of students that pass the reading test by grade level. If you have a school that has a lot of English learners, that can play into the difficulty of accomplishing that task compared to a school that doesn't have that. Doesn't mean that our English learners can't learn that, but if they've just come in and are learning English, they're at a distinct disadvantage to being able to do that. So I don't know that at the board level, you'd get into the school-by-school comparison as long as you know that we're doing the school-by-school comparisons.
I think the answer is my question. Thank you.
I'm just trying to make sure I get it. The PARC is going to replace the ISAT. Wasn't the ACT going away as well or no?
There was some discussion about that, and the state was not going to do that. But the ACT is still here for the school year.
Did you say you're getting outside coaching or something for the teachers who needed extra help and something?
We're doing that in-house, so that my Director of Instruction, Meredith, is going to the middle schools, and I'm going there too. But she's spending all of Thursdays at the middle schools. We're either working with principals or groups of teachers on what they, you know, need. And as we're going through and talking with principals about, I think they really, they're struggling with differentiating instruction, then she'll go in and provide resources or model some instruction, mostly talking with teachers about the existing resources that we have to make sure that they can use them. So we're not hiring outside help. I've just reallocated some of my staff to be that coach piece instead of the creative or the initial training piece.
I'd go on one last question. If I sit here and I look out five years, what is the two biggest things that we're going to, that we want to look to being a goal to achieve in that five-year period?
With the learning environment that we've, you know, our vision for what that learning environment looks like, and part of that is incorporating technology, but if you think back to that vision statement, having a learning environment that promotes learning that can happen anytime, anywhere, that really works on the creative and the collaboration aspect of a classroom, that has targeted learning standards, feedback on that, all of those things that are included in that vision of the learning environment is more than enough to keep us going for the next five years of what all that's going to look like. That falls with assessments of what that is. It's having that gradual release of responsibility and ownership from the teacher to the student. If you look out at other nations that are perhaps doing a little bit better than we are in the United States, some of that is having the student autonomy and choice over the learning process and some of those outcomes. That's part of our vision for the learning environment. It's just going to take some time for us to get there. And whatever technology brings, will go right along with the learning environment that we've created.
You've mentioned the magic word technology. Do you believe that we'll get better, faster feedback and of change, the ability to change if we have that, that more technological-based education?
Definitely with the assessment piece, that technology is great. I can remember when I was an elementary principal and get back the stuff, and I'd have it all over my living room, and I'm making piles, and I'm color coding. And now I can say, okay, of the students that are brand-new to our school, here's how they're doing. Here's how they are to boys and girls. You know, so that, the, you're not having to spend so much time accumulating the data. We're still going to have to spend time analyzing it and looking at that. With our learning environment for that vision, some of it can be done without technology at all. And we've got to make sure that when we do put in technology, it's changing instruction for the better, not just becoming a pricier, kind of showier way of doing things that we've always done. I do think, especially when you look at Google Classroom and you look at some of the ways to be able to collaborate, it's amazing even how it's just changed our administrative ability to collaborate and create over documents. And you can sense it if you're out talking to our teachers, because they're, when are we getting that? We need that. That's going to allow that ability for students to create and collaborate is so much easier with that technology and where that is going than, I'm going to go home and create this on a piece of paper. I can share it with one person. They can write on it, then I've got to go. Now you can get feedback from a variety of classmates, from your students, rewrite it, save it, go back for, accept their comments or not accept their comments. There's just, I feel like I'm dancing all around your question. A lot of times, technology is going to help. Technology is not always the answer, though.
Are we on to the homework part? Are we supposed to answer her about what we would want to?
Well, I'm already interjecting my homework. Please go ahead.
All right. Well, so, so I guess, and this is obviously just my own thinking as one board member, so, you know, everybody else chime in or whatever. But to me, there's sort of two questions here. One is, what do we need as a board? And then what does the public need? And those two things are related, but not necessarily identical, in my opinion. So as a board, which in some sense is almost maybe a little easier for me to identify, certainly I feel from my fiduciary responsibility, when we get the data on subgroups and all of that kind of thing, I feel like we just need to know that. And, you know, obviously, we could go online and find it, but I sort of feel like that is just something that we should get. But related to that, what would be helpful to me would be to say, have a strategic look at it from you guys and say, we've looked at this stuff, and here's what we see as the strategic areas that we need to focus on as a district. Related to Mr. Matheson's question, you know, here's where we see we're going to need to focus. And, and so that for at least a few years out, we know that's the focus, and every year we can look and see, how are we doing on that? Hopefully, it'll be measurable. Sometimes, there may be things that are not quite measurable by our tests, but may be measurable by other results. But, but that, to me, is the key, that it should be a strategic look at the data. What, what resources? You know, is it something that the board needs to provide resources for? For instance, if the ACT comes up, that might be something that we have to do. Or if you need additional coaches, or if you need additional technology. I, I'm just throwing out a bunch of things there. So that, to me, is how that would be helpful to me. In terms of the public, I was thinking about this, because obviously, I did look at that slide, you know, these slides ahead of time. And I started thinking of things, and I do have some ideas, but it occurred to me, you know, really, we started the Engage 200 process. The idea was that that's going to be an ongoing way to communicate with our community. And this, to me, would be an ideal first task, to gather together a few people, not necessarily the same 400 people or whatever, but a few people who showed some interest either through that Engage 200 or maybe, you know, advertised, but, you know, make sure you get somebody from the PTA and somebody from teachers and somebody from the community and say, hey, what do you want to know? You know, because they did, you know, when we did the Engage 200, like this, you had a limited amount of time. And clearly, there were people who wanted to know more. And so I guess that would be my word of advice, is let's go back to them, not make it a year-long process, but, you know, go back to a few people and start saying, hey, what, what is it? And maybe work from there. And then eventually, if it turns out we do do advisory groups, that might be something that's ongoing, but at least for this first year to get it started. And we do have in place a teaching and learning committee, which would be the ideal place to sort of run that through, in my, my opinion. So that's, that's just kind of a broad idea of what might make the most sense about it. In terms of what I heard from the community when we were at that Engage 200, seems to me they were very interested in benchmarks. So some way to represent to them how we compare our benchmarks. But clearly, our benchmarks and, and we are different districts. So there's got to be a way to kind of make it apples to apples in some sense so that they understand what's, what's happening. I think they're very interested in the diversity in our district and making sure that all of our children are well-served. And so to that extent, closing any gaps would be my guess, is something that might be of interest to them. And then growth, which I think was something that Mr. Matheson was alluding to, how do we know over time that they're making some progress? You know, it's okay to look at one sixth-grade class compared to the seventh-grade class. What does that mean? You know, it's two different classes taking the test. So those would be my ideas, but in the long run, I think it all has to be gut-checked against some people from the community if we're going to be true to what we said we wanted to do with the Engage 200. Those are my thoughts.
So I take it, Rosemaria, when we form our teaching and learning committee, and as well as the other committees, that perhaps that might be one of the first tasks that the teaching and learning committee should address with community support?
My suggestion would be to do something like a, but I'm, I'm just putting it out there for Dr. Schuler and, you know, Faye to think about as to how to do it. And again, I want to emphasize, I really don't want to get into analysis paralysis on this and say, well, now we have to wait till next year till we determine how to roll it out. I mean, I think, get a start on touching base with them, and then it's like everything that you do, then the next year, maybe we know a better way to do it. But that's my view.
Any other thoughts or comments, Jim?
I like the idea of Mrs. Matheson's comments. I think the, you know, from my point of view, I'd like to know, you know, without seeing the chart, the chart doesn't show me this much, you know, it shows where we're at and so on, but it really doesn't tell me, and I'm not a trained educator, where you are concerned or where you think we're overachieving or underachieving. So I'd like to see the highs and the lows, and then really saying, obviously, we're going to probably focus on the lows or even focus on the highs. Why? Why is it better here? Why is it, you know, or why are the lows better? And then to the point that you can then recommend to the board, we need to do something different. We need to incorporate better technology. We need to have more training and focus on this area and so on. So that we really have what I would call decision-level kind of information versus, you know, kind of comparative data. And, you know, comparative data is obviously the end result, but I think getting to the end result is what I'd like to be able to focus on, you know, thinking what the impact is, how, how we budgetarily can fund things and so on, so that where we as a board can change direction somehow. So that would be my thought.
I would just, and you've done this all along, but my heart concern is with the kids in the lower 52 percentile. And so all these scores and everything, they're important, and I know as comparison and data, but, you know, like we said this morning, that 25% of our kids are in the low income. And I guess I just would like us, if we could focus, bring all of them up, everything else is going to rise to the top. So I, how you help them, you know, we can't help them more, but I just, I just, we'd struggle with them.
And actually, we can, and on the ELA reflection guide and the math reflection guide, like, one of the things that you have to do to help our low-income students that are English learners. But it also helps everybody else to be very explicit in math vocabulary and have focused time where students have to use that vocabulary. That's one of the things I continue to look for when I go to the classrooms. Some people have really embraced it. That's what caused the elementary school that really did it well, to have those gains. So we know some of those things that we need to do to cause that improvement. We're getting ready to do a training with all of the principals for English learners and how to orchestrate that. But the really great thing is, is it's just what is good instruction? Because what is good instruction is going to help, it's not like they need a different type of instruction. We just need to be really good at our craft. And our craft is a very difficult thing to do, to meet everyone individually where they need to be. But we have a lot of those. There's so much research out there about what needs to be done, but it is a daunting task, especially if a teacher's going to try to do that on her own or his own. You've got to be part of the PLC. You have to have a system to have, you have to have a school-wide, what are we going to do for those students that didn't need it? It can't be done just by a classroom teacher by themselves.
Well, and I've heard different conversations about getting parents, grandparents in to help and to more one-on-one and so forth, and that maybe it's, can be disruptive and harder for the teacher and more work or not. But I know our community would step up to, you know, if they just knew where they were needed. And is, is that something we can do more of?
It is, especially at the elementary level. And then as grade at middle school, I'm like, yeah, I'd love to sit down with my grandma in the classroom. That doesn't go quite as well. But just with our kindergarten and first grade alone, on students that need help with letter recognition or sight words, it does not take a degree in being a reading teacher to be like, okay, we're going to work on these 10 words, and I'm going to be back Tuesday to do these 10 words. When I was an elementary principal, I had bus drivers with their list. You know, like, okay, but then before they get on, they have to know this word. So you just have to build those systems so that you can, you can do that. And as we get better with our data, who needs to know what and which sight words are really going to help students move to the next level, it makes perfect sense to bring in our volunteers and our grandparents and crossing guards and anybody that'll help us. Because sometimes, it's just one-on-one, sitting with the child and say, I'll be back next Tuesday to see whether you know these 10 words.
Yeah, because it, being a teacher and you have so many levels of learning, it seems, compared when we were kids, it doesn't, I don't think it was that, that we even knew about it. But now, I just really don't know how a teacher can meet all their needs, so, you know, the more help, the better.
And the earlier we start and to lower those caps, because by the time you've done fifth grade and you've had four years of that, it's pretty hard to make that up. We have to make the difference kindergarten, first grade, and continue to, to make sure that it, that it works.
Anything else? Okay. Dr. Schuler, technology?
Yeah. And just by way of real quick introduction, while Rod apparently is limping up to the computer, this is not intended to be a super in-depth presentation on synergy. This is truly just an update, I think, of a discussion that took place in the spring when there was some talk about a potential pilot or change. So this is really intended to be a quick update to the board as we're out to do it tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. This is really a quick update. When I started to sit down looking at what we wanted to update about synergy, at least giving the good news where we're at now, clicking again on a little history of where we were at and maybe what, where our mindset was last year at this time period with going into that second year of synergy and still having some issues. So I know this was shared with you earlier, but I could add some more detail to some of this. Just again, as a reminder, we did that in January, February 2011. We had, we did district visits. The discussion at that point was, let's go out and see what other people, similar districts like ours, were using to try to find out, not a product, but to find out what we wanted a system to do. We then created a request for proposal with systems that could do the things we saw other districts do, or, you know, District A was using, you know, product D and said, we really would love it to do this. We made sure we added that those things had to be in the RFP for system. At that time, I think we got 11 responses back, went through and selected four that had, you know, 95% to 98% of what we asked for, and they had to identify if things were there or not. We brought those four companies in in May of 2011 for vendor presentations. Over 80 to 90 people were involved in that vendor presentation. It wasn't, it was in this room, but it wasn't like the person sat all day for all four vendor presentations. Each day was a different vendor presentation, and the person came for their, for the, if it was a scheduling time period, they came and saw the scheduling piece of the product. If it was the, teachers came in and saw the gradebook piece of it, things like that. So we really broke it out so that they saw the part of the product. So we really broke it out so that they saw the part of the product they would use, not the part that maybe Laura sees or I see, which is the whole part of the product, just the specific part to them. Later in May, that committee then selected Synergy, which at the time was, had a different name. And I, for the life of me, couldn't remember it then or now.
Genesis?
Did you? Genesis was the name of the product. The same company through EduPoint. The, the committee overwhelmingly selected Synergy. Again, we saw the product used in, you know, in its full capacity. It wasn't just screenshots of what people said it could do. It was, we actually visually saw the product go. We went live with it then on July of 2012. Then through the fun first two years. The year one implementation and training, this just to remind you if you remember, they ended up firing a middle company that they, they're from Arizona and outsourced a company to come and do the training and then implementation with us. They let those, that company go in November of that year after starting us in July because everything started off on the wrong foot. You know, we could've pointed a lot of fingers to that, but we just tried to roll with it and recreate and, you know, kind of start over into that second semester. But it really started off bad. The bad, you know, taste in the mouth was there from what Synergy had done, you know, with the implementation and all that. I don't remember the name of the middle company. But one thing that did last throughout the year is we did have a lot of software problems. There were problems with the product itself at that time. I think even, we had some board members reach out to other districts and the responses we got were very similar to the other district, same problems other districts were having, we were having. It wasn't something specific to us. It was, you know, if everyone's have, if anyone has an Apple phone and I updated their iOS today, the same boat as everybody else had updated their iOS is now your phone's now no longer working. It was the same kind of thing with Synergy. If anyone was on the product base at the same time, they were having the same issues they, we were. Some of those software problems related to transcripts were something that were, you know, originally it was, yes, you can customize these. They could never get in the way that we needed them for our high schools. Reports definitely were not working. There were parts of the gradebook that were very finicky and, you know, originally working. They made an update, things that were, it was software problems. Probably the easiest way to say it. The usability of the product was troublesome a lot in that very first year. The big thing came up at the end of the year, which was it was not Illinois-ready. And that was in the RFP that they had to have the Illinois-ready. When I say not Illinois-ready, it meant not only for testing and stuff like that, but our funding, where we required tests or attendance records, all that information. We, you know, they almost had to go through it day by day, kid by kid, to get it right for us because the data was skewed. They weren't Illinois-ready. They didn't calculate the amount of time in a day correctly. They used California law. They found it in the code. It was still embedded and the version they gave us was California code. So those were the very first big problems that came out. We didn't miss any deadlines, believe it or not. We still had gradebooks out. We still had grades reported. We, you know, we got a lot of, you know, the students and parents did not complain. The part of the parent view and student view they liked, they saw, or that they saw they liked. It was really more on the everyday usability of us that when we click a button, we wanted to do what the button was clicked, you know, meant to do. And sometimes you didn't do that. We went into year two. At this time, we had already started a conversation with the CEO of that or a lower-level person with that. Early in year two, it was brought up with the, to have a meeting with the CEO. It's leadership meetings with them. But the big thing was there was still that general frustration and carryover issues. The reason I say that is into year two, other than those main three big issues that were still sitting there, issues with the gradebook, a big issue with the data. Illinois-ready, they had fixed, but not, not specifically. It worked. The whole year, we, again, it wasn't like we couldn't function on a daily basis. We might not have liked the product. And yes, it needed help. I'm not gonna defend it in any way, shape or form that way. But I, I think the commitment that we had with the leadership going after, I don't wanna say going after them, but I kind of do, enforcing them to a date, "You need to have these things fixed." They were able to fix the, the big things. They were able to give us the time we needed. They brought in a new company, which I share later in here, which is now a local one. It's not the country music television. C T M, I have their name in here. Once they came on board, because they do now have more districts in Illinois, so they've got another local group who actually is a faction of another district, another state. So it's not like they're new to Illinois and learning the product like the implementation company. This, this company had done 40 different implementations with this, with this product before, many in Illinois, Minnesota, things like that. We started to get, you know, move along in the right way. Problem was, again, with those general frustrations, we still decided to get a committee to look at it because we didn't know if these next four months, things were going to get fixed. We had to have, we had to be ready. And that was our process last year. Let's get the ducks in a row in case this product does fail. And at the end of year two, we're not any better than where we were at the end of year one. We notified you of that possible switch or that we were looking at a possible solution. We did, very similar to the last time we did the RFP, but this time we kind of hand-selected the districts that were, the comparative districts, what product they use. There was only three products out there that comparative districts use. Again, when we talk about the comparative districts, Power School, I don't remember them now. I've lived this for so long, I'm just trying to think. Power School, the penimation product, which is now E-School Plus. And there was one other one. Infinite Campus, that's it. We brought in those vendors again and kind of did the very same solution, but kind of this time we hand-selected the people that were gonna come in, a smaller group, those that were dealing with the frustrations of the current. Again, during this whole second year, we were moving. It was working every day. There weren't data loss. There wasn't huge things like that. We still didn't have the main district data and stuff like that in there. But on a day-to-day tool for doing gradebook and stuff like that, it worked the way we needed it to, outside of people not liking the product. We brought in a vendor, look at the, we brought in the four vendors, did a very similar solution, but really focused on, I think, not getting blown away by the bells and whistles. We were, you know, fools once, shame on us. Fools twice, shame on you. It was kind of the, we were very, it was a very pointed thing. You're coming and showing us these eight things. We want to see it from beginning to end. We don't want you to show us a slide that this thing works. A lot of it was on scheduling, it was on gradebook, it was on those pieces. During that time, the vendor that we ended up selecting, and just because money's up there, I'm not gonna mention the vendor right now that we ended up selecting just because this will go out on the board. But we had originally said that we will pay for a pilot. We were thinking a price range would be in between $25,000 and $30,000 to pay them for their training and implementation, for us to be piloting right now. Their payment to come in and pilot was $106,000. That's just to start the pilot. Then if we liked it and decided to buy it for the whole district, it'd be another $118 in December. At that time, that was not a pilot. Somebody that wanted a $13,000 student district from now on moving forward wasn't gonna charge us $106,000 to see if we liked the product. After that, it was $97,000 ongoing. Currently, Synergy is $78,000 a year. It grows a few hundred dollars every year based on a certain percentage, but it doesn't grow much. This year was a little under 78. Next year, it's a little over 78 in our pilot contract with them. This year, we have had a smooth start. We have had a smooth start. And I do believe a lot of that is because of that support and communication that we created last year with the conversations with the CEO and that new, the new middleman company. Laura Moore still has her weekly meetings with an account representative. It normally is only a, they only normally assign account representatives during implementation periods. We have now kept an account representative throughout. And they're not gonna let that person go quietly or we're not gonna let them go quietly when they say, "You guys are off and good on yourself." They realize Illinois is important to them, is the fourth largest in student. They want to be big here. So they gave us, you know, extra hands and things to get, you know, extra help to get things done. Right now, we do have product enhancements, are in line with things that teachers have been asking for. In the beginning, we've made a long laundry list of things that were broken, things that have been wanted. And we, you know, we called, talked to the difference between needs and wants. They're actually making product enhancements based on the state of Illinois and what teachers, our teachers are requesting to move some things or make, you know, the way you take attendance a little bit easier. So it's not a double-click, it's a single, things like that. They are doing those enhancements. Right now, we really don't have any specific plans to change the, the system. That decision was kind of made more financially that when we had to cut last year, we definitely weren't gonna put $100,000 into something to see if we were gonna switch when the product we had been using had been getting better and was doing what we needed it to do. So moving forward, we are continuing to communicate with EduPoint and CMT, Community Management Technologies for all the priorities and concerns. We, again, Laura has weekly meetings with our account rep with EduPoint. CMT is our, again, local person. When we need someone onsite, they come onsite. They do a lot of our data transfer. And if there's any major changes and things like that, they're here to help hold our hand. Again, we manage the system, but we don't understand the ins and outs of where everything goes. That's, you know, that's a product enhancement. There are planned upgrades. We are doing those in a test environment. There is a new software version that came out at the end of the summer. We've held off on that. Again, you know, because Apple, don't put Apple as 8.0. We held off on that just for a few, few months because we want to get it loaded into our test environment so teachers can play with it. Some of the major product enhancements that are in this next one are on the gradebook specifically, which again are more changes to the way people wanted things to work. No change in function or actually how it works. It's more layout changes, things to look easier, taking attendance a little bit differently. Some upgrades in reporting features and things like that. We're gonna do that in the test environment so we can train the teachers before we turn it on. We're looking to do it sometime probably around Thanksgiving time. Doesn't affect the data, that's not a grade report or anything like that. But if we hold off too long, they're gonna come after us if we say there's a problem with the product in December or January and say, "You haven't upgraded to our newest version." So we have now a plan for these planned upgrades that with our test environment, we can get teachers logged in with their current data in the newer version without affecting their old, the version that we're actually currently using. Laura's putting together a committee for Student Information System Plan to do these three things, to really look and evaluate probably quarterly what other enhancements they want, making a list and suggestions. And it's not like a help us ticket, like, "I would really like this," to where there is a group to say, "Yes, that's definitely needed." I, I think we almost undertook too much in that first year by opening up, "What issues are you having?" We ended up getting a laundry list of hundreds of things that some might have been specific to one individual teacher, not a whole group. So we're gonna try to develop a plan so that we're really kind of looking at, "Yeah, this is something everybody wants, not just, I'd really like this color to be blue or red." And that's generality. But they're also gonna look at the rollout processes we do have and every year, when the new software upgrade looks like, when does the training to development put in? What does the PD look like and who needs it? Sometimes PD is specific to just office staff, secretaries when they need it to deal with the records and things like that. Sometimes it wouldn't be more specific to the gradebook like it is now. But one of the big things moving forward is, and again, this kind of goes back to that money thing, is, I mean, I'd like to say right now, Synergy is our student information system. Not everybody likes it, mainly because it left the bad taste in their mouth from a few years ago. But it's done what we've needed it to do for the last couple of years. It has gotten better. And from my perspective, and I would say HR and business perspective too, we probably need to start looking at a different solution as we're, I mean, Simmons is now 15 years old and still running those two systems. And we still have never upgraded the human resource and business solution. You know, there was a big part last year at the end when leadership made that decision of, "We can't go for pilot at that price." And they weren't budging. It was just, "Okay, we're sticking with it. You made our decision easier." And really, at the end of last year, a lot of us were leaning toward this actually wasn't as bad. You know, it, it took maybe a little push and a little shove and the threat of us leaving for them to really come to bat for us. But it's a student information system that does what we needed it to do, so. Questions? Ever a good time record, anything? Five slides. Questions on that? Again, it was just a real brief update, but.
I, I have questions. I could let you go ahead.
So just a couple of quick questions about some particular problems that I know were particularly egregious. Don't want to get too much down on the dance floor, but scheduling at the high schools, I think, was problematic. Has that been totally solved?
We, there are, you know, and I don't want to get too technical. There are two different products that we think we bought. I mean, that we bought.
We think we bought.
One is the master scheduler and one is the master schedule builder. Or one is the scheduler, one is the master schedule builder. One thing that we actually learned doing the second time through, you know, Synergy said they'll get, you know, 85, 90% in their master schedule builder. We weren't. But in their mass scheduling, we were getting to the 80 to 85% range. I think Synergy was sold. And I even think at the board meeting, they talked about a magic button that's gonna save them months. You know, it's gonna do 95% of all the students. Every other company that came in during that second wave, when we were reevaluating, "Oh, we'll get you 80, 85%." And they were happy with it. Where I think we kind of realized, there is no mas, there is no master schedule builder product out there that does with the way high schools work and the type of schedules that they have that can place that type of percentage. We're always gonna have to go in and look at, you know, we'd love for it to be 90%, but we're always gonna have to look at between the 20 and 15% to, you know, place those students individually. It's not gonna build a full schedule. The second year went a lot easier because the schedule didn't change much from the first year. So they were able to take that skeleton and move it over. But the product master schedule builder, which literally actually says, "This is how many courses you need," and the students go there, we have, we're not using that. We're using the mass scheduler, which is, you know, gets us to 80, 85%.
Then the other thing was, I think this applied a little more to the elementary level, which is that they were able to see under the old system, which was horrible. But they were apparently able to see a student's previous years, maybe test results or grades or something like that. So that when they started the year, they could look and see, "Oh, here's a student that needs a little help in this, that, or the other thing." And apparently on this one, they, for some reason, they weren't able to see that.
We actually have not uploaded any of that data yet. It's, again, with the issues with the data and all those kind of pieces, until we knew the demographic data was correct, we are supposed to be able to upload that data and it would be there. We have not done that yet. And I'm not sure if Laura's waiting to the next upgrade, but I believe that's what we're waiting for, before we put that information in. You're talking about the ACT, not the ACT, but the ISAT scores and all the other pre-tests and all those types of things?
You, you want to talk a little bit? I think there's a new solution.
There is. At a previous board meeting, I think it was the last one, I approved the purchase of a data dashboard system where we will be able to put in all of that data, as well as our own district assessment data. So you will be able to look up last year's district math assessment, last year's ISAT. Oh, sorry. Last year, well, we'll have ISAT for a while. Next year's PARC, all of those kinds of things. Our own fondest panel data will be able to be in there. So we, we have a, a system outside of Synergy to be able to do all of that. And the good thing about it is that we'll be able to create graphs, look at the different subgroups, things that weren't previously available. So it isn't something that we purchased just to replace something that we couldn't get to work in Synergy. This is a whole other product that does that as well.
And, and I didn't really mean to get too much on the dance floor on that, but it just seemed to me, given our discussion of student achievement, that this is sort of a, a vital part of the tool that the teachers were complaining they didn't have. So I just was curious about that.
Yeah, and that was more of what we held it off. Because of, one of the big problems was the demographic data and getting everybody correct, all that ancillary, I mean, we had phone numbers, knew they were and where they were supposed to be. It was a lot of the other stuff that was causing issues that we just did not want to add one more level of data issue to it by uploading that. But, yeah, I forgot about the data warehouse.
Jim?
Yeah, could you go back a couple of slides there, the one that had the dollar amounts on it? Yeah, there. I was confused. Now, when you're saying, we're staying with EdUcare slash Synergy. That's the same, that's the same group?
Yep.
Okay. And that reference about select a vendor, okay, cost major, what, what are you talking about?
We selected a vendor that we were gonna pilot. The group went through after looking at the four and said, "Let's look at this one a little bit further," and piloted this fall. We were then gonna set out and pay, because they're not, they'll let us pilot the software, but not the training and everything else and them coming in and doing training so that it's done correctly. The group that was selected, their, their, their request us to just pilot it for three months was $106,000.
Okay, so we're not doing that?
No.
Okay. That's. Okay. That's.
No, and again, and then just to show you, in its first year, it would have been 200, you know, 24,000, and then 97 every year, when we currently pay Synergy, 78 every year.
Now, that 78 is the ongoing cost. We, we had a big upfront cost.
We had implementation upfront cost. The actual yearly software subscription is based on a per-child, and that is around, it's always been 76, 77, 78, goes up about a thousand, a little bit under a thousand, I'm using the general numbers. The first two years had the, all the implementation and training costs built in, which were an additional 70,000, 90,000 in one year and 74 the next. There were no implementations in year three, four, and five unless we chose to add new features to the product. Which were development features and things like that, which we are not.
We were withholding some payments for a while. Has that all been caught up now?
We have caught up, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have caught up and paid this year 78 already, yes.
Okay. Would you say that the staff is now using this product in this, these?
They were using it the last three years, every day. They had to. I mean, it was the only product we had available. I would be honest to say there are still a, a group that do not like the product, no matter, you know, and some of it's a comfort level and things like that, that, and that's, I don't want to blame it on anything, but I point back to knowing that when it wasn't started off on the right foot, it kind of got off on the wrong foot everywhere. When the product then couldn't answer some of their questions, or the company couldn't answer some of the questions and pick solutions for us quickly enough, it really kind of slammed the product itself. Not being Illinois-ready was a big thing, and I think that was a big part of it, but, you know, the last two years, it's never been down, and it's always worked. If we take attendance every day, we do grades every day, the parents run parent view every day, this, you know, we have, I think, 4,000 parents log into parent view on a daily basis. We have, I don't know how many students log into student view on a daily basis.
So effectively, everybody's got to use this. They may have alternatives that they do something with, but I mean, otherwise?
No, they have. Every classroom teacher has to use it now. Every office staff uses it now. I would say there, you'd be shocked to not find somebody in an elementary, middle, or high school that doesn't log into Synergy every day.
Okay. And this is, we bought this student information system from them, and that, that's one of multiple model, modules they have, or is this the?
No, they're really bases, it's a student information system. That's what they sell. They have other products that are related to education, but not necessarily outside of their student information system.
Okay, so there, again, Edu Care, Edu Point, and Synergy's the developer of the software, and then the CMT is the local support group.
There are a support group that helps us with all the data updates and stuff like that, yes.
And that's, is that what the 78,000 is, or is that the software? I'm confused.
The 78,000 is the software. We pay CMT, I have portions set aside that we used to pay the person currently that did all our SIMS work and stuff like that. I have money in a different budget for the support, and that's only as when they have to come in. Right now, part of that support is paid from Synergy for them to do the standard updates that have to happen, but if we have to call them in for something outside of regular software development, we'd have to pay them for that.
Okay, so I would expect that that cost is diminishing as we now get more involved in the system?
I don't believe I've paid any of it yet this year. I have a budget for it every year, always for purchase services. I always have for various purchase services, and it fits underneath that balloon. I don't remember what the amount I put in every year, it's probably 60 or 70, but it covers from network, you know, high-level network people coming in, either spend it or we don't.
And, and you mentioned some other product there a minute ago. What is that product, and how, what is that not part of the student information system, or what is that?
No, it's a data warehouse, so it really takes in most of our student achievement data, as well as the demographic data for the students. And then that will allow us to have easy access to trend data, put in our own district assessment data, have it all in one place.